Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. What I'm going to do first is I'm going to read the first question to all the candidates. And then I'm going to draw your names out of a bowl here. I've got your names in a bowl to determine the initial order for answering the question. And then we'll have a couple of instructions for the audience and then we'll go ahead and have at it. So the first question for the candidates is going to be, what is a school board trustee responsible for? And what in your life experience makes you qualified to meet the responsibility of being a school board trustee? So what's a school board trustee responsible for and what in your life experience makes you qualified to meet the responsibility? I'm going to draw names out of a bowl here. I've got each of your names in this bowl. I guess I can hold it up so everybody can see it. So I'm going to draw the names and this will be the order that she answered the questions in. So the first person to answer will be Erica Alexander. The second person to answer will be Lakeisha Morrison. The third person to answer will be Mary Ann Van Heitzma. And the fourth person to answer will be Dustin Cowp. The fifth person to answer will be Lisa Aline Haynes. And then that leaves Tim Chaworski last. Just a couple of quick instructions for the audi-- we'll be taking questions from the audience later on. We're going to ask a couple of questions from the club and then we'll open it up. When you're ready to ask a question, if you-- down at the bottom of your screen, if you click the Participants icon, you'll notice that will-- some icons will appear. Raise Hand is one of them, a little blue raise hand. So if during the candidate forum and if you wanted to ask a question, just go ahead and click that Raise Hand icon. And then when we get to the part of the event where we're taking questions from the audience, we'll call on you. Another option is to click that Chat icon. That'll also open up a window on the right. And if you're not able or just not willing to ask the question and you'd rather type it out, just go ahead and type it in there. And my co-moderator Lauren Jazinski is monitoring the chat and she'll let me know that someone there has a question. So let's go ahead. And I did not write down when I was pulling those names out. Could someone tell me the order, please, of the order that the candidates are going there? Who's going first?
Erica.
First? Okay.
Yeah.
So one is Erica. Who is number two?
Lakeisha.
Lakeisha?
Lakeisha.
Then who's number three?
Mary Ann.
Then Dustin.
Then Lisa.
And I'm left.
Okay. And then the timing, I'm going to say, keep it to about two minutes. If you don't need the whole two minutes, don't take it. There's no need to. I'm generally going to let you keep going on your answer unless I sense you're filibustering or repeating yourself, then I might, you know, nudge you off and we'll go to the next question. So keep it to about two minutes. So Erica Alexander, what is a school board trustee responsible for and what in your life makes you qualified to meet the responsibility? Erica Alexander.
All right. Thank you so much for this opportunity and thank you for hosting. So I think for me, one of the things that I've learned as I've been learning more about these positions is really understanding some of the things that I think are important in the school district. In general, the board helps to decide and helps to come together with what the vision should look like in a district. And, you know, more importantly, helping to set goals to achieve that vision and then doing some check-ins to see, is that actually happening? And I think one of the most important things for me is the opportunity for stakeholder feedback and to ensure that the stakeholders, so whether they be, you know, students, parents, teachers, or community members, what they have to say matters and that should be reflected in in the goals that the district has. It should be reflected in opportunities to check for progress. And in terms of what I can bring to the table in that, I have a lot of experience professionally, working with Board of Directors, been with a nonprofit for the past 20 years, which we are governed by a board. So I have been involved in strategic planning. I have been involved with fiduciary matters, including, you know, writing $1 million budgets and then also managing them. And one of the things that I think is just really important and I see an opportunity to happen is the opportunity for building in some measures for feedback so that, you know, the district may feel like they're doing a really good job and they've been, you know, kind of on point with certain matters. But if they haven't checked the pulse of the stakeholders, then how can we really be sure that that vision is playing out in that way? So I think that's about it.
Okay. Thanks Erica.
Thank you.
And Lakeisha Morrison, what is a school board trustee responsible for and what in your life makes you qualified to meet that responsibility? Lakeisha Morrison. You're muted, Lakeisha.
Thanks for having me here today. I would believe the trustees are responsible to speak for the children and advocate for the community along with the parents and the schools altogether to meet a goal and to further our education for the public school students. I believe that our visions and goals is the right direction, in the right direction we want them to go is to benefit everyone in the long run as the children get older. I think what I can bring to the table is, I'm a leader. I like to lead. I have a voice and I feel like I can speak to the community through my voice that I've been very strong in the community with. I believe the responsibilities for us is also to hold our superintendent accountable for the needs of our children and the goals and the demands of our community and our parents. So that's what I think.
Alrighty. Thanks, Lakeisha. Alrighty, Mary Ann Van Heitzma, Van Heitzma, excuse me. What is a school board trustee responsible for and what in your life experience makes you qualified to meet that responsibility? Mary Ann Van Heitzma.
Thank you. Just thank you to the Dem Club for hosting this event tonight and thank you for all those have joined to listen to the candidates. So I appreciate that. So a school board trustee is an elected individual. So we are elected by the community in which we live. And so we serve the entire community. Ultimate responsibilities of the school board, one of them is fiduciary. That is a huge responsibility of a school board trustee. We need to ensure that whatever we're doing to run a school, our school district is financially sound, that we're fiscally responsible to ensure that our expenditures are in line with what's appropriate. We don't exceed our-- obviously, we don't exceed budgets. We ensure that financial allows us to continue the programs that we have, the strong programs, the strong schools. And it allows us to plan for the future. Part of that financial responsibility is ensuring and working towards things like the bond that we had passed in 2017 that allows us to bring our structures current and modernized. So they might meet the needs of the students. Our technology is fabulous. We still have two more years of bond work to happen and all our schools will be top-notch schools, which is something to be proud of. Another responsibility, which is pretty key, is, you know, an education. So we are here and tasked with ensuring that every single student within our district receives a quality education. And so, you know, financial responsibility and equality education go together. If we're financially sound, we can afford to continue strong programs that we need for all of our students and ensure that they continue to do well. Some of that pride comes in our graduation rate that has remained at the high school in the 90s, 95%-ish and better. So we're very proud of that. It also affords us other quality education through our VOTEC programs, through our IB and DP programs. Being fiscally responsible has allowed us to expand and have those other additional opportunities for our students, which is pretty key.
Alright. I'll cut you off there. That's been about two minutes, so I'm going to cut you off there.
Okay, sorry Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann Van Heitzma. Dustin Cowp, what is a school board trustee responsible for and what in your life experience makes you qualified to meet that responsibility? Dustin Cowp.
Thanks, Tom, and thanks for everybody jumping on the call. It's pretty simple. Mary Ann said it. You've got to be able to balance a budget. And then the second thing is just to focus on the kids when it comes down to being a school board trustee. In my experience, I was student government treasurer in college. I have a master's in finance. And I've been in charge of $100 million budget at work. So when it comes to the finance piece, I know how to balance a budget. I can get that done and make sure funds are allocated to the right areas. And then focusing on kids, I've coached lacrosse and I have two kids of my own that I'm very excited to hopefully graduate from Royal Oak School and really help make Royal Oak Schools the best possible district.
Alrighty. Thank you, Dustin Cowp. And then Lisa Aline Haynes, what is a school board trustee responsible for and what in your life experience makes you qualified to meet that responsibility? Lisa Aline Haynes.
Hi, everyone. I just go by Lisa. That just makes it easy for everyone. Thanks for having all of us here. What a fun night. Okay, so what is a school board member responsible for? Well, like everyone has already said, see, when you're number five, you just don't want to repeat everything. But we're elected by our community. Yes, we have to be fiscally responsible. We also have to be socially responsible. We have to make sure we do what is right for the kids, the teachers, our community. We set the general school policy, vision and guidelines of our schools. And of course, we work collaboratively with the superintendent. And like I said, we should be the voice of the kids. We should be the voice of the teachers, of the parents, and making sure that we're really listening to what's going on and moving forward. Why me? Well, I've been on many Boards of Directors in my life, whether it's been educational, whether it's been with guilders, or whether stagecrafters. Like I've been involved in many different things. I've been project leads. In my current role, I'm a clinical services project manager. So I know how to multitask like the best of them. I'm high energy. I'm a go-getter. If you say you need something done, I get it. You don't have to worry about Let's see. And I will speak up for what's right. I'm not always going to be the yes girl. I'm going to be the, is that what we need to do? Are we doing what's best? I'm not afraid to say, wait, guys, we need to stop. We need to rethink this. And I think that's important, especially with the times we're living in right now. Like Dustin, I've been in charge of large projects. I was in charge of a second-degree nursing program between OU and St. John Hospital. It was a $5 million project. It's still running. So I just, I have energy, guys, and I have passion. And this is something I want to do from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Then finally, Tim Chaworski, what is a school board trustee responsible for and what in your life experience makes you qualified to meet the responsibility? Tim Chaworski.
First and foremost, I want to thank Tom and Lauren for putting this together for us and hosting this evening. Tom, a school board trustee has three legal obligations. Those obligations are to propose a balanced budget. Those obligations do include hiring and reviewing the superintendent, which is probably one of the greatest tasks of a school board. And the third of the school board member is to write the school policy, the school board's policies for the district. What I can bring to the table is I have negotiated a contract, the first contract ever passed in my workplace unanimously. There's never been a contract that everybody has agreed with. So I think that experience, very recently, my wife brings to the table for myself, the ability to work with two very different sides. And we work with the management side and the union side of negotiation. And we're able to come together and make a contract that both sides were able to agree with and vote on, as I said, unanimously. And furthermore, I can work with all types of people and can usually find some kind of common ground to work with and compromise on. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim Chaworski. Okay, let's talk about the pandemic because you might have noticed that it's been in the news. Here's the question is, did the Royal Oak School Board make the correct decision when they decided to do virtual learning instead of in-person learning? And why or why not? And do you support Governor Whitmer's decision to use emergency powers to control the spread of COVID-19 in Michigan? And that's, Lakeisha Morrison, why don't you go first? Did the Royal Oak Schools make the correct decision about the pandemic going to virtual learning?
Absolutely. I believe they did make the right decision. They're looking out for our children first and then our parents. And then, actually, I believe the teachers before anything, they need to be able to teach our children. Me being a mother of three, two children in school, one at the Royal Oak Schools, School District is just, I'm very thankful for the teachers. They're looking out for the entire community. Losing three people through the pandemic, I would never want that to personally hit someone else as personal as it hit me. I think it was the best decision for everyone. As much as I would love for them to get back into school, I understand the safety side of it. But as for the governor's decision, I'm behind her 100%. I just go back to having to witness my brother-in-law's mother, which is my best friend's mother, pass away and not able to go to a funeral. So putting my, you know, my freedom aside for others, that's totally fine with me. And I'm happy we went through this. But I'm hoping that the kids get in soon, sooner than later. So.
Okay. Thank you, Lakeisha Morrison. Mary Ann Van Heitzma, did the Royal Oak School Board make the correct decision when they decided to do virtual learning instead of in-person learning? And why or why not? And do you support Governor Whitmer's decision to use emergency powers to control the spread of COVID? Mary Ann Van Heitzma. And there you go.
Thank you. Absolutely. I voted yes as the incumbent. That's out of the candidates here. I totally supported the decision that was made. It was made collaboratively with administration and our staff, putting together plans, doing a review of Oakland County health information. Ultimately, we had to do what was the safest and the best thing for our staff and our students. And I totally support the work that Governor Whitmer had done. She's a strong woman and I support strong women. And I think she made the right decisions. You know, we still continue in talking with other school districts. I was on a call today with other school districts across the state. People are still struggling with the decisions that, you know, that they're trying to make today. You know, when do we transition to live? You know, some school districts are really struggling with that. And I'm really proud of the decision that we made. We have a plan for return to schools. We'll evaluate the plan. You know, lack dependence is out of our control, right? So we're going to have to continue to monitor Oakland County Health and work with our nurses that have been allocated to us. And yeah, I totally support the governor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann Van Heitzma. Dustin Cowp, did the Royal Oak School Board make the correct decision when they decided to do virtual learning instead of in-person learning? And why or why not? And do you support Governor Whitmer's decision to use emergency powers to control the spread of COVID? Dustin Cowp.
So unfortunately, I disagree with the school board on this wholeheartedly. There's always a virtual option on the table. And I think that's huge, right? We always needed to give parents, students, the virtual option. But the parents that, on the other side, the single families, parents, or single-parent families, there's no way that they can go to work. That's just a bigger drag on our economy. And I think we're really increasing the wealth gap when we do that, when we do stuff like that. And even if there was some kind of like special option to get people in face-to-face, even at a smaller smaller groups, what should have been possible. I really think we need to be a leader on this. I think we just followed that, followed a lot of the local districts. And we could have been really a leading school district when it came to in-person, face-to-face learning. And then, yes, I do agree with Whitmer though. She needed to do what she needed to do. And I think I'm glad that she did do. We had great numbers or great precautions in the beginning. So I think that really helped our numbers throughout the last summer. Some of the things maybe went a little long with the gyms being closed where some of those preventative measures where people could have been getting healthier and stronger, maybe I don't agree with. But other than that, yeah, I'd say she did a okay job.
Okay. And thank you, Dustin Cowp. And Lisa Haynes, did the Royal Oak School Board make the correct decision when they decided to do virtual learning instead of in-person learning? Why or why not? And do you support Governor Whitmer's decision to use emergency powers to control the spread of COVID? Lisa Haynes. You're muted, Lisa.
Yeah, see, Lauren, maybe I shouldn't be allowed to handle my own muting options. Yes, I do believe the school board did the right thing. I know a lot of folks are upset with what went down and the fact that, like Dustin said, people are trying to struggle to see how can they take care of their kids and how can they work. But they did the right thing because they were looking out for the health and welfare of the kids, the teachers, the administrators. And that always has to be first. As a nurse, been a nurse now for 22, 23 years, I can understand what it means to try to stop the spread of a disease and all the pieces that go into that. Myself and a lot of my friends have dealt with this. We've seen people die. We've helped people get better. So we don't want that to happen to our kids. Heaven forbid that spreads in our schools. Do I agree with the Gretsch? Yeah, I agree with the Gretsch. I even have a T-shirt that says, "That woman from Michigan." Not wearing it right now, but absolutely. What she did took bravery and it took courage, especially when our own leader is knocking her down for it publicly. She had to do what was best. She followed kind of the lead from New York as well. And they did the same thing. You've got to be strong in times like that. If not, we would be in the same predicament as some of the states in the South. Their numbers are going up and going up. Is it a financial hardship, an economic hardship for a lot of small businesses? Absolutely. But this isn't something we saw coming. So she's doing her best. She's trying, she's listening to her folks that are around her. And she's trying to put Michigan residents first and making sure that we're safe. So absolutely. Agree, agree. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa Haynes. Tim Chaworski, did the Royal Oak School Board make the correct decision when they decided to do virtual learning instead of in-person learning? And do you support Governor Whitmer's decision to use emergency powers to control the epidemic? Tim Chaworski.
I do completely agree with the second vote the school board took. The, we prior to that vote, they went with a half virtual, half in-person plan. And I am very thankful that they went to an all-virtual plan. As I read this morning in Bridge, Michigan, the schools that are currently face-to-face have had a, it said, triple the amount of COVID cases, a triple increase in one week's time. Very thankful that the Royal Oak School District is not part of that gain in, not gain, but that increase in COVID numbers. And I do completely with everything the governor's done. She's led based on science and data, which I don't think many of the other states, especially in the South, as Lisa said, have followed. I think she's making very smart, very calculated, and very research decisions. And I do approve and support anything that she's done in regard to this COVID outbreak.
Okay. Thank you, Tim Chaworski. Then Erica Alexander, did the school board make the correct decision when they decided to do virtual learning? And do you support Governor Whitmer's decision to use emergency powers to control the spread of COVID? Erica Alexander.
I do believe that the school district made the best decision to go with a fully virtual option. I believe that it was based on the science and the recommendations from our local health departments. I think we have to consider that, I think one of the things that I think is very real that Tim brought up about parents who might be single households or folks who might be struggling with having to do this. But the thing I ultimately go back to is that our schools, just because they have essentially always served in a capacity to provide, you know, the equivalence of childcare or of care, which allowed for work, doesn't mean that we have to simply send kids back into potentially dangerous situations, ask teachers to be in a dangerous situation. It's more about the system being broken and us needing to figure out how to support those families to be successful. I don't think putting kids back in and forcing teachers back in is the answer. So I personally was really relieved because I knew, I know that my daughter would do better in a virtual situation. But I also know that she's high-risk. So when that decision was essentially taken off the table for me, I felt really good about that. So I fully support the district. I'm also 100% behind the governor. I believe she's using science. I believe she has good people that she's consulting with. And I believe that she's had to take a pretty strong stance despite being really destroyed publicly by not just the federal government, but, you know, people in our state. And I don't think that she has an ulterior motive. I think that her motive was to keep all of us safe.
Yeah, thank you, Erica Alexander. Okay, let's move from the pandemic to racism. This is after all 2020. The Royal Oak Multicultural Parents Association, their shorthand name is RAMPa, they've criticized the school district for racial disparities in achievement and discipline. And is this criticism valid? You know, are there racial disparities in achievement and discipline in the Royal Oak Schools? And if this criticism is valid, is there anything you could do as a school board trustee to fix the problem? And Mary Ann Van Heitzma.
Yes, thank you, Tom. You know, to say that racism doesn't exist is not true, right? So the RAMPa group has raised the issues and the concerns within our Royal Oak Schools. And Royal Oak Schools has been working, and I personally have been working to help remedy some of that. So, you know, we started back at the end of 2016, really in 2017, you know, we formed a cultural competency engagement committee. I was active participant on day one. I didn't just join the committee this year. I've been an active committee member since its inception. You know, it's not easy work and things don't change immediately, right? You know, the concern I have is as well, just the environment that we're growing up in today. What our kids see on a daily basis is a great concern to me. You know, we have made the right movements as far as working on our curriculum, working on ensuring our environment is inclusive. And I think that, you know, if I could control the world and make it a happier and better place and people treat each other with respect, I mean, it would be, it would be a great time. But I think, you know, the work never ends. So we continue to do that work. And it's not, you know, you fix it and you move on. It is an everyday, it is an underlying theme in everything that we do. And it's an underlying theme in everything I do in my everyday life. So, yeah, I think it's still work to be done and work that will forever be done. So.
Thanks, Mary Ann Van Heitzma. Dustin Cowp, the Royal Oak Multicultural Parents Association has criticized the district for racial disparities in achievement and discipline. And is the criticism valid? And if it is, what could you do as a school board trustee to address the problem? Dustin Cowp.
Honestly, I can say I don't know. I mean, I'm the minority in a community that's 95% white. So from my experience, and with my daughter being in kindergarten at Keller, I would say no. I mean, she doesn't come back with any bad stories. We have parents that are, or friends that are people of color in the same, in the same class. And I've never heard anything, so I don't know. I think at a point, it can be manufactured at a time. And I don't know. I think our kids have a better lens than we do. So I actually take the, take a lot of lessons from them. Where I grew up was not that diverse. And really, I mean, things have changed a ton over the last few years. I think we are moving in the right direction. But it really just comes down to education. I've been a leader of the LGBT community in the workplace at Frito-Lay. And I help educate my parents on, or my, well, my parents and my kids on that movement, making sure that they treat everybody with respect and dignity. But I think, yes, it definitely comes down to just making sure that the education is there. And it's coming from a bunch of diverse, different lessons, plans, and candidates.
Yeah, thank you, Dustin Cowp. Yeah, thank you Dustin Kow. Lisa Haynes. The Rampa has criticized the school district for racial disparities in achievement and discipline. Is the criticism valid? And if it is, is there anything you could do as a school board trustee to fix the problem? Lisa Haynes.
Hi, I'm a little disappointed in the first two responses, guys. Yeah, it's there, it's happening, and for someone to use the word manufactured, I, alright. Yes, it's there. I've seen it. I've talked to children who've experienced it. My own son has experienced it as an Arab-American. Is it everyone being racially unfair and inequitable? No, of course not, but it does exist. Now, I, I've never seen it at the elementary school level myself, but in the middle school, there have been many complaints, and there have been many instances, and many videos that have been shared, and many kids' experiences. I don't think these young kids would make this up. I don't think they're that, that way, and they have that ulterior motive. In the high school, that's where my children have experienced it. So yes, it's valid, and especially nowadays. Look what's going on. It's 2020, and we're still dealing with this. What can I do to remedy this? Well, I'm part of the Cultural Competence Engagement Committee. When I found out about it, I immediately signed up, and I'm helping as part of retention and working on ways to make sure that the teachers we hire are diverse, and I'm very happy that the new hires this year, we had 38% that were diversity hires. I think being open and honest, I am a Rampa parent myself, and recently endorsed by them, and I think that I need to keep carrying the mission and the passion of what we need to do to make sure all children feel appreciated and loved, and all children feel that they are good, and they don't have to try to earn this goodness. Like I said, I'm passionate, and if these kids need someone, I think I can be that, I know I can be that person, along with some of my other candidates here. And just, you know, we need to attack each complaint with vim and vigor, and make sure we get down to it, and not just pacify. And I think one thing that the Royal Oak School Board needs to do is they need to have that meeting with Rampa that Rampa's been asking for, for four years, and I think that would be a great first step, that we really need to collaborate together and work together.
I'm gonna cut you off there, because I think you made a good point. Thanks Lisa.
Okay.
Tim Chahorsky. Rampa has criticized the school district for racial disparities in achievement and discipline. Is the criticism valid? And if it is, could you do anything as a school board trustee to address the problem? Tim Chahorsky.
Great question. First, I want to thank the entire Rampa parent group for endorsing my candidacy and my campaign this afternoon. Very proud that they were able to look at my, from my entire adult life, working for social justice and end racism. And the word manufactured for racism, I think, is the problem. If you believe racism in the school district is manufactured, that's, I'm gonna say, 60% of the problem. It's not manufactured, it's been proven, there's data that we've seen showing the disparity in the discipline within the students of color, and also the LGBT students who would be included in the diversity, which I feel are probably not treated as fairly as the other students within the school. What I will do when elected is at the first board meeting, I will ask for a report on the discipline. I want to see which students are disciplined, I want to see the racial background. I want to know why they're disciplined, and why their discipline was different than students of non-colored students. We've seen that information. The school district now says they can't provide it because it is a violation of students' privacy. We don't need to see the names of the students. I just want to see the racial background, and I want to know why they've been disciplined and others have not been. And again, I just really, I can't get over the word manufactured and racism. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Tim Chahorsky. Then Erica Alexander. The Rampa group has criticized the school district for racial disparities in achievement and discipline. Is the criticism valid? And if it is, could you do anything as a school board trustee to address the problem? Erica Alexander.
It is a 100% valid issue. The limited amount of information that was obtained by an amazing young man who graduated from the district and who used the Freedom of Information Act to gather data on race relative to some disciplinary practices is absolutely mind-blowing, and will show you that it is in fact all of the areas where things are to be subjective, so areas like insubordination. Those are completely, those are, those are, those violations are 85% children of color, even though they only make up 15% of the population in the school. Yet if you take things that are not subjective, things like having a vape pen, or you know, having drugs or alcohol on your person, things that you can't really, it's very black and white, those things were 85% white kids and 15% kids of color. So it's very obvious that there's an issue, and I think the problem is that the school district doesn't want to acknowledge that, and, and they need to, and it needs to be transparent, and we need to hold our administrators accountable, we need to hold, we need to eliminate the use of the police in the schools for discipline reasons. If we continue to, to go that route, we're going to continue to see these racial disparities in discipline, and of course, through that, in achievement. As a school board trustee, I would, as Tim said, like to see the data. I'd like to eventually have that data be available to the public. There are many school districts around us that make that district, I'm sorry, that make that information public to parents and community members. I think that we know there's a problem, and I think there can be a solution, but we all have to agree that there's a problem and there's something to work on.
Thank you Erica Alexander. Lakeisha Morrison. Rampa has criticized the school district for racial disparities in achievement and discipline. Is that criticism valid? And if it is, is there anything you could do as a school board trustee to fix this problem? Lakeisha Morrison.
You guys have to forgive me for my shaky voice, because when I went offline, I was crying. The fact that you've got people that said that it takes time for change, how long do we have to wait for change when it should have been here? As a Royal Oak citizen and resident, all my life, I've been fighting for a change. I went to Royal Oak School Districts from preschool all the way to high school, and there hasn't been change. When you put new people in the school board, you beg the community, the community begs for better people and acknowledgement that we need change. Rampa has done nothing but support the Black community. Myself, it hurts my heart when someone says manufacturing, just because you haven't experienced racism, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. My children have gone through it, and they're in the Royal Oak system. When a five-year-old child comes to me and says, my child comes to me and says, Mom, I can't go to a party because I'm brown. Yes, there's still racism, there's still issues within the school. And this is just, what, 10 years ago? So the fact that you've got police officers in these schools, when I even went to Kimball and it didn't have it, the fact that there's data there that's stating that these kids are being picked on for what other reason besides their color. So yes, there is issues within the school. So if you don't know, educate yourself before you speak on something that you do not know. You might have Black friends, you might have purple friends, ask them about their experiences. That's what I would bring to the table. I would say, let's talk about our experiences. Let's talk about our friends' experience. How can we change this? Change has been a long time coming. It shouldn't have been talked about, it shouldn't be, well, give us time. No, there is no time to be a human person in this world. I brought 3,000 people to Royal Oak, and if all of them can acknowledge there's something wrong within our community, and outside of our community, in our nation, something's wrong with this picture.
Okay, thank you Lakeisha Morrison. Now let's go ahead, we had a couple of questions, we got a couple people. We'll go ahead and call on them. First, we'll call on Paul Curtis, and then we'll call on Ian Dunkinson. So Paul Curtis, why don't you go ahead and ask your question first?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to ask, and I know we only have two minutes on your, on your answers, but what are the top five concerns for the district over the next five years? And which two are you most excited about working on and why?
Yeah, let's, let's cut that down, just, just mention two. Just mention the, the two top concerns you have, maybe even, if I could amend your question just.
In that case, I'd rather say what are the top five, and I don't care what your, what your most, your most important two are. Because I think there's more to being a school board member than any one or two things, so.
Okay, so you'd like them to mention all five? Okay, let's do that then. So why don't you mention the, the top five concerns that are most important to you, and then if you want to expand on any of them, go ahead, but try to keep it to about two minutes. Dustin Kow, you're first. What are your top five concerns as a school board trustee? And if you want to expand on what you'd work on first, go ahead and talk about that too. Dustin Kow.
Well, thank you guys. So top five, Paul, nice question. Top three for me, safety, nutrition, student opportunity, I would say going with longevity of the school district. So just making sure that we're always being the leader, no matter what it is. And then the last one is definitely diversity. I, I know, I would not say that there's not a problem or racism. I said, I didn't know, and I, I do apologize for using the word manufactured. I think it's learned, I think students can definitely learn from the faculty and their parents when it comes to being more open-minded. But yes, safety, nutrition, student opportunity, and what I mean by student opportunity is just giving the kids as much extracurriculars and clubs as possible. We have a great community here, we're one of the bigger ones in Michigan. We need to make sure our kids have the opportunity to do, if it's chess club, glee club, hockey, football, I think that's where kids really learn how to become a team and really become, learn how to become a better community and, for the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Dustin Kow. Then Lisa Haynes, tell us what your top five priorities are for things you'd work on as a school board trustee for the next five years, and if you want to expand on a couple of points, go ahead and try to keep it to two minutes. Lisa Haynes.
Five and two, here we go. Okay, financial responsibility, we have to make sure we stay on track and we don't overspend. That's not number one, though, that's number five. Number four is modernization of the curriculum, looking outside the box for things like giving course credit for kids who are like in Model UN. That way they have different opportunities to expand and to educate themselves. Number three is health and safety, and primarily the behavioral health, the nutrition, and the stability of our students. You cannot ask a student to learn and grow and become something amazing when they don't have the stability in the home, they don't have the food, clothing, shelter. I mean, if Maslow's hierarchy of needs aren't taken care of first, how can we expect them to do their Algebra II homework? Making sure that behavioral health, like, are these kids okay? Especially right now with the pandemic, with the pandemic, a lot of kids aren't okay. And I know we hired more social workers and stuff, but I think there's more we can do there, maybe looking at some of our professionals in our community who can volunteer their time. Diversity, what am I, number three, number two? Okay, so diversity, I'm gonna take it in two ways, so that's not my number two, my number one. Diversity in our leadership and in our teachers, and I think this year, we, we've started on that with 38% of the new hires being diverse candidates, watching those teachers introduce themselves, it was like heaven. So making sure we continue to do that. And then diversity in our curriculum. We shouldn't have one month for African-American history, it should be every day. Hispanic history should be every day. Arab-American history should be every day. Asian-American, we should be talking about that in all of our classes, and making sure that if the teachers don't know what to bring to it, that we get experts in there. And I think that's something that can be done right now. We don't have to wait, guys. That's something you can add right now. So I think, is that five? It's close to five? But just taking care of these kids, guys, it's everything. And if we don't do it now, then when do we do it? Thanks.
And thank you Lisa Haynes. Tim Chahorsky, please tell us your top five issues that you want to work on as a school board trustee, and expand on them as you see fit, and try to keep it to two minutes. Tim Chahorsky.
Paul, I like your confidence in us. Five years wouldn't put us into a second term. Number one is the next school year budget. I mean, we all were thankful that the budget cuts that came down from the state this year weren't as drastic as we thought they would be. And I think most people agree that the 2021 school year is gonna be much different with revenue sharing and all the money the state's lost this year. It's gonna have a great impact on the funding of the schools. We need to really concentrate on providing the best education and the best place to work for our staff, with, with screensaver taken away from any of that. Due to the pandemic, like everyone has said, I want to focus on mental health for both the students and the staff. Even without the pandemic, I think that's something that's necessary. We need to take care of our kids and the people that work for the school district, whether you be an educator or a support staff, I think it's important that any employer offer that to them. I think diversity in the curriculum and staff, I'm glad to see, as Lisa said, that they've increased the diversity in the staff in the irons of this year, I want to see that continued, and the curriculum as well. Vocational training, I just saw on the news this evening that there's a shortage of school trade workers. I think not every student's designed to go to college, and I'm pretty sure we all know those kind of people, we grew up with them, we went to school with those people. If you're not designed for university, there's no shame in becoming a tradesman or a skilled tradesperson, and I think we can. And pushing that shameful job, and quite frankly, many of those jobs make more than the average college graduate. And as we've learned in the last year, the online technology within the school district needs to be vastly improved. We don't know what the future holds, we don't know when students will be back in school. I want to see Royal Oak as the leader in online and technology within the county. Is that a good five, Paul?
Thank you Tim Chahorsky. Erica Alexander, please tell us your top five issues that you want to work on as a school board trustee over the next five years, and expand on some of them, and try to keep it to two minutes. Erica Alexander.
All right, so financial stability obviously has to be at the root of all of the things that we're doing. We need to remain fiscally solvent. I'm excited, as many of the other candidates have talked about the fact that we are starting to see diversity among our hires. I want to see that not only continue, but I want to see there to be a very intentional focus on retaining those teachers. We know that we sometimes get teachers of various racial and ethnic backgrounds into the district, but we don't, we don't seem to be as good at keeping them in the district, and I think we need to be very intentional of finding out why, and making sure that we correct, so we can maintain those. We definitely need culturally competent curriculum, and this is a problem across the country. I think that our children need to see themselves reflected in the curriculum that they are being taught. I think it needs to be not only in history, but in science and in, you know, reading and all of those things, we need to really be, the students need to be able to identify themselves within that. I think that we need to take a trauma-focused approach so that our staff are aware of and understanding of the impacts of trauma. And this trauma can also be things that, that happen to them. So if they have a student that's particularly difficult to deal with, or behavior, circumstance that they're, they can have secondary trauma from that. So mental health is imperative for our staff, for our students. We can't downplay the impact of anxiety that people are going to be having as we look at going back into the school districts. Are we supporting our teachers and our administrators and our children through that process? I definitely want to see change in the areas of the equity among the disciplinary practices of the district, and I think, I think those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Erica Alexander. Mary Ann Van Heidsma, could you tell us the five priorities that you have working on the school board the next five years, and expand on a little, and try to keep it to two minutes? Mary Ann Van Heidsma.
Okay, just want to make sure, I'm always behind Lakeisha, so you don't forget Lakeisha. So financial is a pretty critical one. You know, I was happy to hear Mallory in her live, her Friday Live, she talked about the fact that we won't have any cuts this year is what's projected, so that's excellent news. It allows us to continue the progress that we have. Also, key is, we have an upcoming Um, also key is we have an upcoming millage, um, that's gonna be on the ballot that's pretty critical. It's 46% of our school funding. Um, you know, that is absolutely something that has to be talked about and shared and promoted. Um, you know, so, um, and also continuing to advocate for appropriate funding for public education is pretty key. Um, without that, um, you know, we, we really need to reevaluate the structure of how school, public schools are funded. Um, obviously equity is pretty key. Equity for all our students, inclusive of our, um, or special needs students as well. It's, it's a very broad spectrum of what does equity really mean? Um, you know, teachers. So we have a shrinking pool of teachers out there. We need to, um, uh, totally agree in retention of teachers. But we also need to, um, try to figure out, um, alternative ways to, to recruit and, um, uh, support, uh, the, the trade itself, right? So we have a shrinking pool. And, and, and I know folks are excited about the diversity in our hires this year, which we're very proud of and have been working on for the last four years. Um, and the bigger challenge with that teacher pool is just the fact that, um, minority, minorities are, um, even fewer in the teaching profession. So that'll become a greater challenge going forward as well. Well, equal opportunities for all our students is, is critical. I'm proud of the many clubs. We have, you know, over a hundred clubs at the high school or approximately a hundred clubs at the high school. Any new club can be formed if a student desires it and has a teacher sponsor. It's amazing what we offer for our students. Um, you know, our Vo-Tech program is, is hundreds of students that we have that participate in our Vo-Tech program. Um, there's a lot of students that aren't college ready. We acknowledge that and we find them the right career path for themselves. So I think that's really important. And those partnerships of our students with our staff. Um, I know from my own experiences with my children, um, how important those relationships and those connections were that are, you know, the staff and, and the children had. Um, so that helps and supports them as well.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off there since that's a little bit over two minutes. But thank you Mary Ann Van Heitzma. And Lakeisha Morrison, I apologize for skipping over you. But Lakeisha, uh, your top five priorities, if you were on the school board for the next five years? And if you want to expand on a little of them, go ahead and try to keep it to about two minutes. Lakeisha Morrison.
I appreciate the little skip over. I needed a couple of seconds to breathe. Uh, my first, number one goal would be equal opportunity, equal education for all children um, in the school district, um, starting from IEP, um, our children of color and, I mean, just everyone in between. I think this goes back to the fact that, you know, there's children still not at the correct level of education that they should be at. So I think equal opportunity and education is goal. Um, a diverse staff. I mean, it's amazing to see all those different faces, but I'd love to see more. And they offer more for these children when, you know, my son is now in eighth grade and his first interaction with a black teacher was in eighth grade. Um, that's kind of sad. So being able to bring more to the table and more teachers into the school would be my, I think, my number one goal. Um, and also teaching African-American, African-American studies and bringing in diverse education, um, books and, you know, letting go of the past where, you know, we want to be able to educate our children about the goal, the good things that black people did and the Mexicans and everything in between. Um, I think acknowledging Rampa would be another goal that I would love for them to acknowledge. Um, I think if they were to acknowledge them, they would learn more and appreciate culture more. Um, educating the staff as well to be able to, um, co-invest with other people on their diverse, diverse staff. Um, and just bringing in like counselors of all colors too. Because if my son has an issue, he might want to go to someone that looks like him. Um, and I think that's pretty, and obviously staying on budget with everything. We definitely need a budget to keep our school district, um, thriving. And that's it.
I'm gonna ask you one follow-up question because I wasn't sure what you meant by acknowledging Rampa.
Um, acknowledging Rampa because they've been asking for a sit-down with the board. Um, they've been doing a lot for the children of color and black parents as well. Children of parent, uh, black, children of colored children, parents. I'm sorry, I'm all like scattered. Uh, um, I think if they acknowledge them and let them know that like, hey, we all want the same, which is a fair opportunity and equal education and everything in between. I mean, they might be able to go far. Um, and once they acknowledge it and sit down at the table, I think we can go places.
Okay, thank you Lakeisha Morrison. Um, Ian Duncanson, I'll be calling on you next, uh, so you can prepare to ask your question. I just want to let everybody know this, this event's sponsored by the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club. My name's Tom Regan, I'm the chair. And Lauren Jazinski's the vice chair, she's helping to run the event. And just welcome everybody. And if you're interested in joining our group, uh, go, we, we've got a website. You go to R O A D C dot com. Then there's instructions on there on how you can join. And, uh, we got dues of $10 per year per person. If you wanted to join, you can pay online. But I, uh, thank you everybody for coming. And I'm Ian Duncanson, go ahead and ask your question, please.
Thank you, Tom. Um, so, uh, my sister is a teacher in Hazel Park, uh, which obviously falls outside of our district. Um, but I get a lot of intel from her about what she's experiencing. I've also become aware that Rochester Schools recently decided to bring back students with special needs, um, as in the first kind of in-person test for how things will go with, under COVID circumstances. And there's been a lot of outrage, especially among, uh, friends of mine, family of mine, et cetera, who either know, are, or are, have a vested interest in those with special needs. Um, being upset that we're basically in Rochester Schools anyway. They're basically testing the waters of COVID outbreaks with students who have special needs as though somehow they are less than all of the other students who they could have selected random groups to bring back. So I know we had a question about COVID, but when you look forward and think about the reintegration of students under whatever circumstances we might be facing, there is no new normal that we can really expect. Um, how would you approach the school reintegrating students into the school? Do you think that there are specific groups that should be test groups? And how would you help the school district make those decisions?
Okay, so your question basically, how, how would you reintegrate the school or get the schools back to in-person learning? What's the, what's your ideas on getting the schools back to in-person learning? Um, Lisa Eileen, Lisa Haynes, you go first. So Lisa, what's your, uh, thoughts on getting the schools back to in-person learning? What needs to happen?
Okay, Ian, wow, great question. Thank you for sharing that. I can understand why the parents and the community in Rochester is upset. I don't think anyone should be labeled as a test case. I think that's just super insensitive and not right. Um, you know, as you were talking Ian, I, something popped in my head that I think what would be a good idea is not to force everyone to go back because some folks are really scared about going back. Not everything is known about COVID yet. And you have to look at the fact that some teachers and some leadership and some students might be high-risk. I myself am a high-risk category because I've had breast cancer and I have a chronic disease. So I think the best way to reintegrate, and it's just an idea of mine and you can like it or not like it, is that we give the option. You can either all go back, you can have, either go back in face-to-face. And of course, that's gonna be with temperature checks and distancing and masks and taking every precaution. Or you can still do it from home. And I think when we talk about, you know, having modernization and stuff, can we still do that? I mean, I know that a lot of the parents who signed up already for kids to have a virtual academy, they're signed up for a whole entire semester. So can that continue for the parents or for the kids who don't feel comfortable going back yet? Or are high-risk, until we have the cure for this disease? You know, we want to make sure that everyone's safe. So I think giving the option. There are some parents who, and kids who are like, no, I want to go back. I'm gonna wear my mask. And I would think that if, if we were gonna say, if they were gonna do this test case, you wouldn't use kids with special needs. You wouldn't use children who are high-risk with chronic diseases. And I think you, if you're talking about who should go back first, I think it should be the older kids because at least they understand what social distancing is. They're more able to understand, to follow direction. Well, you know, they're teenagers, but to follow direction. But I think offering the option, either staying home and working, and doing it from home or going back. You need to give people the option so no one feels trapped and no one feels like they're being pushed into something that they don't feel comfortable with.
And thank you Lisa Haynes. Uh, Tim Chahorski, what are your thoughts on getting the school district back to in-person learning? Is there any way to do it safely? Tim Chahorski.
Thank you Ian for your question. Um, I did read about that in Rochester and I understand the appearance that that gives, that they are the lesser students. And if that's not truly true, they need to really work through explaining that better because that's clearly the impression that I took from reading that is, at least. I also know Utica Community Schools have proposed the exact same plan and they've included the special education students as well as their kindergarteners and first graders. As Lisa said, I don't think you should start with the littlest kids, the kids who don't really understand social distancing. It should most likely be the older students who understand the seriousness of COVID. As I said in one of my answers earlier tonight, that there's been a tripling of COVID cases within schools. I don't feel this is a time to go back to school. I don't think we should be experimenting. I don't think any grade is worth getting sick. And to go back to your point with the special education students Ian, I think that many of those students have pre-existing conditions that make them more susceptible to COVID. So would I support sending the special education students back to school first? No, I would not. Um, I also understand that many of those students do need that social interaction with their fellow students. And I would encourage maybe some sort of a POG system and let those parents get their special needs students together in the safety of their homes in smaller groups of two or three. Same really paramount here is the safety of the students and again, the staff as well. And once the governor and the state find it safe for groups to get back together. I mean, we can't gather in a group. And there are people who thinks you should put a group of students to go into classroom. It's just completely not the right answer. And I think we need to wait and see where the science and the virus take us before making decisions like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim Chahorski. Um, Eric Alexander, uh, do you have any thoughts on how we can get the schools back to in-person learning and, and doing it safely? Eric Alexander.
So, um, I agree with much of what Lisa and Tim have discussed. Um, obviously we have to follow the science. And when we get to that place where we do believe that it is safe, um, I think it's imperative that we continue to have the virtual academy option. Uh, I think that there are gonna be individuals, um, students and parents who are gonna want that option. I believe there are gonna be teachers who need that option, who need to continue to be, uh, teaching as a virtual academy teacher, uh, to protect themselves. I would be extremely hesitant, uh, any plan that would suggest that teachers are being expected, um, as they have done in some districts, to teach both in-person and online. I think that is a completely unreasonable request to make of teachers. So I think we need to do what's already been done, um, with the current arrangement, with the virtual academy having its own teachers and with the teachers that are currently turning, teaching virtually, being the ones that would, uh, return into the schools, um, with the children. And I think we have to give choice and we want to support both options, um, particularly so that we can keep families in the district.
Yeah, thank you Erica Alexander. Uh, Lakeisha Morrison, your thoughts on how we can get in-person learning safely? Um, how we transition into that? Lakeisha Morrison.
I think the best way is to take the advice of the health, um, experts because we really don't know much about this virus. And the fact that we're gonna send, um, special needs children in there with, it's just ridiculous because those are someone's children first. Um, we need to put aside our own selfish needs and stop thinking that we can use other people as experiments. That's crazy to me. I would never want my child to be someone's experiment. It doesn't matter if they, you know, walked around in circles. I, I, that's just, it's totally wrong. And the fact that like little children are Petri dishes of germs, why would we send them into schools knowing that they can bring something back to their grandparent? Most of our, I mean, I have family that is, uh, they're, my mother is watching, um, my nieces and nephews, and I would hate for them to come home and bring something back to grandma. So I think as long as we can figure out a way to safely do it, by all means, maybe a couple of days a week, uh, we can go in there slowly. And I think the older kids, like Lisa said, you can try, see how they do first because they're, you know, they listen, at least they're supposed to listen better. Um, and keeping the, the schools clean and, you know, I think we need to worry about our administration first. And if they're safe, or they felt comfortable enough, then, and the parents felt comfortable enough, I think we can all be on the same page as slowly bringing them in. Um, but I think it's ridiculous to experiment on children.
Yeah, thank you, Lakeisha Morrison. Uh, Mary Ann Van Heitzma, what are your thoughts on getting students back in for in-person learning and how to do it safely? Mary Ann Van Heitzma.
Um, yeah, thank you, Tom. So the district already has a return to school plan. Um, we presented that, um, at one of our board meetings. It was a thoughtful, um, lengthy deliberate plan, uh, put together by our staff and administrative team. You know, it, it exists. So, um, as soon as, you know, working with our healthcare, Open Tony Health, it's a safe return to school and we can implement that plan that we've already put together, um, then that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann Van Heitzma. And then Dustin Cowp, what are your thoughts on getting students back in school for in, in student learning and in-person learning and how could they do it safely? Dustin Cowp.
Yeah, I, I agree with everybody. I think you, there's not much, I mean, I'm the last one to go. You have to have two plans, right? There, what, one thing that we can all agree on is that everybody's gonna have a different opinion. And I will not, I don't want to tell an, an individual parent how to feel, how to, uh, send, what they have to feel comfortable with, with sending their student in-person or virtual. So definitely giving, uh, this whole student body an option and making sure the teachers are comfortable too with the proper cleaning and, um, obviously with what the, the current board has on there hopefully. And I'm sure they'll do a great job at keeping everyone safe as possible.
Okay, thank you Dustin Cowp. Then I just wanted to, for all the candidates, be sure you, you dump your contact information into the chat sometime before the event's over in case anybody has any, uh, questions they want to follow up with you. Just put your contact information in the chat. Yeah, I'd be remiss in not mentioning this, as chair of a democratic club, the decision for virtual learning was made by our president back in January and February when he decided there was not gonna be an effective national response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we've found since then that the reason he made that decision was because he thought it would help him in the presidential election. And just an incredible dereliction of duty, just, just shameful. Paula Martino's Mante, go ahead and ask your question, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm gonna take the, uh, take advantage of asking a blatantly partisan question following up on Tom's. Dustin, I'm a Democrat, obviously. Uh, do you agree with the ideals of the Democratic Party and how we advance them as a school board member? And if you don't agree, why?
I'm sorry, was your question just for Dustin Cowp?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead Dustin Cowp.
Uh, yes, I do agree with a lot of the Democratic views and I will support, um, on both sides of the party. I, I think having a very never-minded view is, no matter what it is, I'm gonna do what's right for the kids. It really shouldn't matter what party a person's associated with as long as they're there to do the right thing for the community and for the kids and for the staff.
Okay, thank you Dustin Cowp. Then if, if anybody else has any questions, you can put them in the chat or else you can, um, click that blue raise hand icon and we'll call on you to ask a question. Um, here's a question from the club for everybody. Uh, the, the economic recession is likely gonna lead to significant, to a enormous loss of income for all public school districts. And what, if anything, can a school board trustee do about this enormous loss of income that, that's, that's coming down, that, you know, screaming down the pike at us? Uh, Tim Chahorski, you're first on this one. Tim Chahorski.
Okay, thank you for your question, Tom. Um, as we discussed earlier, the, one of the three charges of the school board is the budget. three charges of the school board is the budget. So there's no way around it. You need to balance the budget with a school district. As a trustee, I would work as hard as I could, very diligently, to be sure that little to no instructional concessions were made for the students and also the staff. I don't believe that the staff should suffer as well. I think maybe the first thing to look at would be where administration could be cut. What kind of things could they concede to, to keep the education as it is today, or even better if possible, and to keep the pay levels and benefits available to the staff, both educational and support staff. Those are very important things to me, and I would do everything I could to be sure that those two things were not cut first or at all if possible.
Yeah, thank you, Tim Chaworski. Erica Alexander, because of this economic recession that's occurring right now, that's likely going to lead to a significant or even enormous loss of income for Royal Oak Schools and all school districts. And is there anything a school board trustee can do to, to address that? Erica Alexander?
Well, you know, I think this is a very real thing that we all know is coming and something we're going to have to get creative around. I think now is the opportunity for the current board to be looking at, are there areas that can be changed in spending now so that we can potentially, you know, look at, what does that redistribution look like? What, and, and these are just suggestions, obviously not having all of the financial information in front of me and available. But I'm thinking about things like looking for other creative opportunities for funding and looking at what are the ways that we can tweak and change our current funding? What are we prioritizing now that may have to be cut so that we aren't impacting the education of the students and we are not harming the staff financially? Because we need both of those things. We need the students' education to be solid, and we need the teachers to be there and able to afford to be there and, and teaching our students. So we're going to have to look at all of the other things that make up a school budget. So we can decide, unfortunately, what's going to have to probably be cut, or what creative ways can we fill those holes?
Yeah, thank you, Erica Alexander. Lakeisha Morrison, the, this recession is likely going to lead to a significant, even enormous loss of income for all public school districts. And is there anything that a school board trustee can do to address that? Lakeisha Morrison?
I wish I had the perfect answer for that, because we're all kind of suffering in the home, outside the home, the community is just suffering altogether. I think acknowledging where we need to keep our money at in keeping the children educated during this recessive recession, taking cuts where, you know, do we really need this in the lunchroom? Or do we really need certain things in the schools? Taking those cuts, obviously keeping our children's nutrition there, we can keep that. But like, do they need that Snicker bar or something? I think taking cuts where we don't actually need is the best thing we can do. I think that as long as we're keeping the teachers and the staff, administration staff, and schools, and I mean, I don't really have the best answer for that. I think we're just all kind of suffering, trying to figure out where we're going to pull from and get through this. So just balancing a budget, really, is all we have to do.
And thank you, Lakeisha Morrison. Mary Ann Van Heitzma, the recession is likely going to lead to a significant or even enormous loss of income for Royal Oak Schools and all school districts. And is there anything you can do as a school board trustee to address that problem? Mary Ann Van Heitzma?
Thanks, Tom. I mean, I was happy to hear that the projections by the state of the loss of revenue weren't as bad, was not as bad as they had originally projected back in May. So that was a positive statement. Continuing to work on advocacy is pretty key to ensure that public schools are funded appropriately. I think you hosted the MEA president, Paula, when she was on. They support the research and collaborative study that had been done. PTA, PTAs also support that work. So advocate with the teachers union, the PTA and school districts with, through MASB, we can continue to be advocates to ensure that public education is funded the way public education should be funded. And, you know, 80% of our expenses in a school district are staff. So, you know, clearly being fiscally responsible is pretty key. We want to retain that staff. We want to ensure those programs continue. You know, this millage that I spoke about earlier, 40%, 46% of our funding is, is crucially important. And ensuring that that continues is, is crucially important as well. So I think it's just that continuation of advocacy, fiscally responsible. I'm proud to say that we, you know, have fund equity, that we've worked hard to, to build up fund equity over time, which is pretty important. So that when the initial projections that we had for the school year were going to be $5.5 million deficit. And, you know, there were going to be some considerations that we had to talk through and perhaps use the fund equity. And, you know, again, I think just continuing to be fiscally responsible and understand how school finance works is pretty critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann Van Heitzma. Dustin Kow, the recession is likely going to lead to significant loss of income for Royal Oak Schools and all public school districts. And what, if anything, can a school board trustee do about it? Dustin Kow?
Um, I think like Lakeisha said, there's no perfect answer. I wish we had the perfect answer, right? We, we want to make sure we're funded. I think it comes down to getting the millage passed, right, is that first thing. I mean, I guess to everybody on the call, even if you don't vote for me, vote for yes for the millage. Man, we got to make sure that the school's the center of our community and making sure that it's fully funded is, is going to be number one to me. And I'd say if you could address it, going to the state, right, writing your, your state and state politicians, making sure that we're funded and voting correctly, to make sure that, that all the, everything passes. Yeah, that's about all I could say we could do. And then, like everybody said, just being fiscally responsible is, is going to be key over the next few years.
And thank you, Dustin Kow. And then Lisa Haynes, where the recession is likely going to lead to significant loss of income for Royal Oak Schools and all school districts. And what, if anything, can a school board trustee do to address that? Lisa Haynes?
Well, I think everyone's just said it. So I'll just say ditto. No, just kidding. I think, yes, we have to get the word out about the millage. That's the biggest thing. And, and we need to make sure that whenever we have important votes like that, that we get the word out to everyone. We also need to be responsible with what we already have. Let's not do, not, not spend money on things that really don't impact the kids or the teachers the way we need them to. I think as a school board member, I think we need to listen. When you were first asking the question, Tom, you said loss of income for, loss of income. The first thing I thought about was the loss of the income of all the families. Yes, the school board and yes, our school system is going to get hit. But the first thing I thought of is loss of income for families. And so we need to listen to what people are going through. We need to find alternative funding solutions for programs that we have. Like right now, we provide meals and we have blessings in a backpack. And we have the Royal Oak Schools Foundation, but what happens if that money dries up? But looking for alternative funding solutions, whether it's grants or large companies that can help donate money. And we need to make sure that our hardest, that are, that are folks that are hit the hardest are taken care of first. I just wanted to add that because I think, you know, we worry about what's being cut in the schools. But we have to worry about, we have a lot of families where folks lost jobs, folks don't have money coming in. So we have to worry about medications and food and just the basics. So, and just continue to support the programs that we do have. We have a lot of great programs that folks don't know about. And there were some that I didn't know about until the beginning of the year when COVID hit. So just getting the word out so that everyone, so those who can help others know where to give that help. And then those who need the help know where to get it from.
Okay, thank you, Lisa Haynes. And I'll have to mention again, as Chair of the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club, that there's, there's one other, there's another option too. A couple of you hinted at it was, and that option is raise hell. You know, one reason why we have austerity in this country is because about 50 years ago, the super rich decided they no longer wanted to pay their fair share in taxes. And their share of the tax burden has been falling for 50 years. And that is the main reason why we don't have enough money for schools and healthcare and other important things. Our own state representative, Jim Ellison, is, is working to address this. He's pushing a bill that would allow for a progressive income tax so that the super rich would begin, again, paying their fair share. So if, if fighting austerity is something you're interested in, I'd urge you to join our club, because that's, that's something we're definitely going to be doing next year. There is no reason why we have to lay prostate and let these people destroy our schools and our healthcare and our roads and our bridges and so on. This is something we can fix. It's a very simple problem. It's just spending money on it and fixing it, you know, investing the capital in these things. So we're going to be working on that. And that'll set me up for my final question. And we might have time for one more from the audience after this. But this is to the candidates. Please answer yes or no first. Do you want the endorsement of the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club? And if yes, how do you plan to win this election? For example, are you doing any fundraising, any voter identification, get out the vote yard signs, stuff like that? And I forgot to note, so who was first this time? I guess Erica Alexander, you go first. Do you want our club endorsement? And if yes, what are your plans for winning the election? Erica Alexander?
Thank you. Yes, I would very much like the endorsement of the club. That would be a significant, you know, important honor to me. I have been working hard to get fundraising and signs out there. I am working to get some literature. I built a website. I've been doing a lot of sharing in social media, various community groups, basically talking to anyone willing to listen. And, you know, taking, taking every opportunity to talk about why it's important to me to be a part of the school district. So I hope I'm given an opportunity to prove that.
And thank you, Erica. Lakeisha Morrison, do you want the endorsement of the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club? And if yes, what are your plans for winning the election? Lakeisha Morrison?
I would love the endorsement. I mean, you guys, you guys have been there for me during my protests and just getting my voice out for equality for all people in Royal Oak and our nation altogether. I feel like there's a unity within your group. So we share the same morals. So I would love the endorsement. I've been speaking out on social media and I do have my yard signs ordered. So just going to my neighbors and giving them my vision for the Royal Oak Schools. I think a lot of people are on board with that. And I think people also want to see themselves in me, speaking through the school board. And I feel like you guys given, has given me a step up to helping my voice get amplified. So I would love the endorsement.
Okay, thank you, Lakeisha Morrison. And Mary Ann Van Heitzma, would you like to be endorsed by the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club? And if yes, how are you planning to win this election? Are you doing any fundraising, voter ID, get out the vote, and et cetera? Mary Ann Van Heitzma?
Um, yes, thank you, Tom. So I'm proud of the MEA endorsement that I have from, or Education Association. So I would appreciate, yes, an additional endorsement from the Democratic Club. And anybody who's interested can join me. My lit drop is Saturday at 10:00 a.m. I will submit the information in the chat, how you can join me. So yes, I, much like the other candidates, I am working on fundraising. The challenge that I find is that I'm a part of so many different community organizations, when people say they have limited funds, and I would rather that they make their donation to my Royal Oak Youth Assistance versus me. And I would rather pay the $25 or that they were, you know, going to contribute. So, so yeah, I mean, I work like everybody else to, to try to raise funds. And I have yard signs. I have a lit drop I'm doing this Saturday. And yeah, I would, I would be proud to have that endorsement as well. Thank you.
And thank you, Mary Ann Van Heitzma. Dustin Kow, would you like the endorsement of the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club? And if yes, how are you planning to win the election? Are you doing fundraising, voter ID, and get out the vote, et cetera? Dustin Kow?
Tom, absolutely. I'd love the endorsement. But to me, it's not about winning, right? It's more about, I've got to know all these candidates over the last couple of town halls, and I would vote for any of them. So to me, to say it's a, to win the election, I just want the school to be the best possible. But if you do want to support me, I have yard signs, social, share that out. But I haven't been raising any money. I'd like to just, whatever money I would raise, I would just donate back to the school or to the local club. So it's not about that for me. So yeah, thank you for the support. And thanks for everybody for being on the call. And thanks for, for all the other candidates to pushing us each to be better.
Yeah, thank you, Dustin Kow. And Lisa Haynes, would you like to be endorsed by the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club? And if yes, how are you planning to win the election? Are you doing fundraising, voter ID, get out the vote, and et cetera? Lisa Haynes?
Of course, I want the endorsement of the Royal Oak Dems. I mean, who wouldn't? Yeah, I would love that. I would be honored. And I would feel like, I would feel real blessed and touched that I was able to earn that from you guys. What am I doing? Oh, I'm doing what everyone else is doing. Lawn signs, picking up my literature this week. I'm going to get that out. Part of it I'm going to mail and some of it I'm going to go door to door. I'm doing fundraising like everyone else. I'm doing social media. My kids made sure I had an Instagram page, you know, teenagers. And they've shared with all their friends and their friends are liking stuff. So I've been talking to a lot of the high school kids about stuff. And so it's kind of been like a civics class. So I've been really enjoying that. I've been posting it everywhere, not just on my page. I have a Facebook page, just my private one, but then my campaign Facebook page. I'm also the, one of the folks that runs the Royal Oak, We Love Our City Facebook page. So I post not just my stuff there, but I post stuff about Erica before. I think Tim has posted stuff on there. I think Lakeisha has. Anyone can post stuff on there. Dustin, if you want to, Mary Ann, go for it. It's an open community love fest there. Being part of these forums, being part of the Rampa Forum, after that was done, I posted that everywhere. And of course, was equally thrilled to get their endorsement, just like Tim had mentioned, he got theirs today. And then I think I talked about the lit drop already. So I'm planning on walking some of it and mailing the rest. So, but yes, I would love, 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 love your endorsement.
And thank you, Lisa Haynes. And finally, Tim Chaworski. Tim Chaworski, I'm sorry, I keep pronouncing your name wrong. I read it first and before I heard it, and then I'm forever condemned. Would you like the endorsement of the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club? And how do you plan on winning the election? Are you doing fundraising, voter ID, get out the vote, and et cetera? Tim Chaworski?
So my answer is a little bit different than everybody else's. I was endorsed by this great club two weeks ago. I'm extremely proud to add that endorsement to my other list of endorsements, which do include the MEA Femmes for Dems, ASME Council of 25, the Michigan Regional Council of Carpenters and Mill Rights, and just two days ago, the Building and Trades Union. I've ordered about two weeks ago and had delivered 5,000 pieces of lit. I have one box and maybe a quarter of a second box left. My team and myself have been out walking doors. Last Saturday and Sunday, I walked 19 miles by myself. We've hit, I believe, nearly 3,000 doors throughout the city. People have asked me, why am I walking so much? I've raised, and I'm not ashamed to say, I've raised quite a bit of money. And the reason I'm walking and the reason I want to win this election is to make those people who donated their hard earned money to me proud. It's not easy to ask for money and it's even harder to take money from people. So I feel when people do give me their hard earned money, that I do need to prove to them that this is something that I want to do and something I'm really to work for. And that I do appreciate everything that everybody here and elsewhere have done for me. Free C financial support from several city, state and county officials. And that also is a very proud accomplishment of mine. Thank you.
And thank you, Tim Chaworski. So we're going to have to wrap it up because we do have a hard stop at 8:30. There, there was one question I wanted to ask, maybe the candidates could dump it in the chat. People were interested in what your educational background was. And if you wouldn't mind just putting in the chat, maybe your highest educational attainment or something like that, that'd be good. But thanks again. I'm disappointed because I was hoping this forum would help me make up my mind. Instead, I just found out we, we've got six excellent candidates in four seats. So it's going to be a tough decision on election day. But thank you to all the candidates. You all did great. I mean, it was really wonderful to hear your thoughts on, on what, what you should do as a school board trustee. I hope after reflection, it helps me make up my mind now. Now I'm hopelessly muddled. Thank you, everybody. Please, if you could put your educational attainment and any contact information there in the chat. It's 8:30, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn. Is there any way they could see the chat, Lauren, after we adjourn? You know what we will do? We will post it on our club Facebook page. So when, when you, with, with the chat, we can save like as a text file. So we will post the answer to that last question on our club Facebook page. So just look up Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club on Facebook, and we'll get you there. But thank you, everybody, again for coming, and we'll see you next time. Goodbye.